I love them.
Okay, good evening, folks. It is seven o'clock and it is Tuesday, July 12th. This is the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville and we are in the council chambers at seventy-five North Bonson Street. We will start this evening's meeting with roll call.
Barbara Das?
Here.
Dan Francis?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols and Amy Seebrood Wilson have both been excused. And Catherine Burke?
Here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Indicate if you would prefer separate discussion or action on any of these items. We have council minutes from June twenty-second and June twenty-eighth, special meeting and the June twenty-eighth regular meeting, payment of bills, the June financial reports. There are no appointments tonight to boards or commissions, licenses, Class B fermented malt beverage and liquor licensed to A D H M O R L L C Platteville, Nick P.'s agent for the premises at seventy-four North Second Street, and one and two-year operator licenses as indicated. Permit, uh, street closing permit for Division Street from Bradford to South Chestnut for August, or pardon me, July twentieth, temporary signs for the fly-in, drive-in breakfast and for the Old House Enthusiast House Tour. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Catherine to approve the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And I believe we have one, uh, person who has asked to speak at this point in time, and that would be Arlene Dorsey Sis.
I just made it.
Yeah, good.
Um, I just want to remind you, we got this Stone Cottage coming up on the twenty-fourth. We want to have people come. Please do not bring the hot- hotness that you did at our last one because it was so hot. We didn't have a very good, uh, number of people who participated, and I can understand why, but we've got a lot of stuff going on and we're part of the city, uh, as we celebrate, so thank you so much.
So this is on Saturday, July?
No, it is on, it is on, uh, Sunday.
Sunday.
Yep. That one, we, uh, went along with what's going on with everything that week.
And the time is the afternoon?
Yeah. Um, it is, uh, we'll be there till four o'clock and opening at, uh, one o'clock. And the ice cream is awesome.
I might mention that you could probably have breakfast that morning at the fly-in, drive-in breakfast that's, uh, being hosted at the airport by Boy Scout Troop eighty-two. And then after you have your pancakes, you can go over and have ice cream. So it's a, it's a day you can get all the food you need with two stops in Platteville. Okay, any other citizens' comments, observations, or petitions? Okay, then there were reports in your packets, uh, board commission and committee minutes, uh, tourism committee, Eileen isn't here, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals, Tom?
No, nothing further.
Anything from the Historic Preservation Commission?
No addition.
I do the redevelopment authority and there's no additions there. The other reports in the packet were the city attorney itemized report, the water and sewer financial report, the airport financial report, and department progress reports. Does anybody have any comments or questions on any of those other reports? And it appears that City Hall is back up and functioning without a, without gas smell tonight.
Yes.
Now, that made quite the news because people from all over were texting about City Hall being closed. All right, let's go to the action part of our agenda. The first item on the action agenda is contract eleven dash sixteen, highway painting, highway painting.
Yes.
And, uh, Howard?
Thank you. Um, this project involves painting the centerline stripes and miscellaneous street markings on Business One Fifty-One, Broadway, and Water Street. Uh, we had three bidders at the bid opening. Uh, the low bidder is Century Fence from Pewaki, Wisconsin. Our base bid would be to repaint Business Highway One Fifty-One as-is, as a two-lane road with wide shoulders, uh, from Chestnut Street to the four-lane. Um, uh, alternate A is to paint Broadway from Main to Stevens. Alternate B will be to repaint Water Street between Pine and Business One Fifty-One, uh, with the center-left turn lanes and everything else. Part of the reason for, for this is that we're, uh, at the last meeting, uh, the contract was approved for a thin overlay on that section of road, so we put the thin overlay and then we'd do the painting on top of that. Um, the, the controversial part here is alternate C, uh, which would be done instead of the base bid. So instead of having a two-lane road with wide shoulders from Chestnut to Mineral Street, uh, it would sacrifice those wide shoulders to create a center-left turn lane, uh, and then from the Mineral Street intersection to the medians at Millennium Drive, it would reduce the four lanes to three and create wider shoulders in this area. Um, separating out left-turning traffic from straight traffic, um, is safer for vehicular traffic. We have a number of traffic crashes when people do not notice the, a person stopping or slowing to make a left turn and they do a lot of rear, there are a lot of rear-end crashes, um, particularly at the, um, at the intersection with Mineral Street and along that stretch, um, by Domino's, Fastenal, down in that stretch right there. Um, the biggest, uh, argument against doing a three-lane road is that it would, um, reduce the wide shoulders that we currently have that people are using, uh, for walking and biking along the street. Um, so, um, staff's recommendation would be to, uh, do alternate C, the, the three lanes instead of the base bid, and alternates A and B for the bid price of fifty-one thousand nine thirty-four oh three.
Okay, questions or comments?
I have a question for the Chief of Police, Ann Howard. How many crashes have taken place rear ends on the section from Chestnut to Mineral?
Chestnut.
From Chestnut to Mineral Street, how many crashes? That's two-lane with wide shoulder.
I don't have the actual number in front of me. They're been-
Okay, then, okay, could you speculate as to what the causes are for the crashes? Inattention?
In that area.
Yes, along that whole lane. Inattention?
Probably inattention, again, following too closely, not yielding to a vehicle that is slowing to maybe make a right turn. Or a left turn in that area.
Now, as far as deaths along this, if we extend the whole distance, death, there was a pedestrian, no, a bicycle, bicycle person killed.
There was a bicyclist and, uh, that was, I believe, early last, or late last summer. And then there was a, um, motorist killed around Christmas last year.
And what was the nature of that crash?
A vehicle turning into Rundee's Chevrolet. Uh, a vehicle behind it did not, uh, take evasive action in terms of braking in time and struck the turning vehicle, pushed it out into the oncoming lane.
Okay, thank you. Well, personally myself, um, I think we need to protect the pedestrian and the bicycle rider more than we need to protect the, uh, driver. The driver has more protection. The driver has, uh, airbags, and as cars become better, the drivers are going to have, uh, features such as, uh, braking by the car itself in response to a vehicle in the front. So I've seen a number of people walking along the highway between Chestnut and Mineral Street. I prefer to keep that as a wide walk area, and so my preference is to leave it the same, at least for that stretch, from Chestnut to Mineral. If you want to change it for the other stretch up there and make it three-lane, uh, I'd certainly go along with that. But this other one, I, uh, I cannot agree with that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I like the idea, like I mentioned before, uh, the road is not built for pedestrians and bicyclists right now. Understand the concern of them still wanting to use the road. Um, but this is something that would improve the numerous cars that already are traveling the road and make it safer for those cars. It's already dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists. So this would make an improvement to it.
Yes, it improves for the vehicle, but, uh, makes it worse for the pedestrian and the bicycle person.
Not that much more, more, worse. It already is worse. Okay? Do you understand? It already is dangerous for someone to walk right across the road.
We're gonna make it worse through there, huh?
Worse, sir, yes.
Any other comments? Otherwise, does anybody want to offer a motion? I've already spot, I, I, uh, spoke last time about when this was brought up. Um, I think this is a big change. I think, um, uh, before big changes like this are made, that it's incumbent on us to, uh, uh, help people understand that those changes are forthcoming. I don't think that's been done in this case. Um, I think, and I really, as I, as I've seen people, uh, on Water Street, um, totally not know how to use the center lane, I'm not so sure that this is, uh, that the use of this lane will be any better in these areas than it is on Water Street, which hasn't been real good. So I've expressed my opposition to that.
I'd like to ask the Chief of Police a question about it. What do you think of this project?
It is a significant change, um, from the standpoint of vehicular traffic. I think it would, um, stand to reduce points of conflict. Left turns typically are one of the major sources of friction resulting in traffic, uh, crashes. And in theory, this would be a way to reduce that, that area.
I agree with Barb. The, this, the center lane for, for turning is not well-used. Years ago, they used to, as I recall, down by Jamesville, they made a, a center lane for turning. That didn't last very long, before your time.
I, I agree with the center lane. Um, my thinking is, though, I, I would like to see us have a little bit more community input, that maybe, um, not that I'm saying that we should, um, not do it or do it, but I'd like to see what, um, the community feels as a whole. Um, I, I truly think it's a good idea, but maybe the, the community has some thoughts that I haven't thought about. So, um, I'm going to make a motion to the, to table it to the next meeting.
Table it? A motion to table is not debatable, but does need a second? Does need a second.
And to the next meeting?
To the next meeting.
The next meeting. Are you asking for additional information then, or what?
Yes, additional information.
You're asking for information from the business people?
First of all-
Public in general?
We need, we need to know if there's going to be a second to the motion.
Right.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table, which is a non-debatable motion. And you're making this motion with regard to-
Getting further-
Public-
Public information.
Public knowledge.
Right.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
Okay, we'll vote.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so I think at, at that, that the people along that stretch should be notified of this impending change.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda then is assignment of purchase agreement for sixty Ellen Street from the Platteville Fire Department to the City of Platteville. And, who's going to take that? Brian?
The Fire Department has assigned an offer to purchase this property. According to the terms of the offer, it's to close on Friday. There is an understanding, if this motion is approved, that the city will step into the shoes of the Fire Department and will purchase this property and pay for it. The Fire Department has advanced the fifty-five hundred dollars worth of earnest money. That money will need to be returned to the, uh, Fire Department since the city will be paying for it and that will be taken care of in connection with the closing on Friday. Are there any questions?
And twenty-two thousand dollars of this mon, these monies are from savings from the street construction budget this year, twenty-eight thousand from deferring the Harrison, play, Harrison Park Playground project to a subsequent year, and five thousand dollars from savings from this, from, uh, that money that was set aside for the, the redevelopment or redesign or whatever you want to call it of the city website. So that, that would be the source of the money.
And then just a few additional points. Um, the title commitment requires there be certain assurances given to the city, given by the city to the title company in connection with this transaction. One assurance is that it's been properly authorized, which is, of course, what you're doing here this evening. And then, secondly, that there is, and this acquisition is for a public purpose, which I understand to be for possible future expansion of city facility like the Fire Department.
Okay, questions on this?
I'd like also, just to mention that because it is a, a city purchase for future public facilities, the Plan Commission did review it at their meeting last night and did recommend proceeding with that purchase.
Excellent. Okay. Additional questions on the assignment of the purchase agreement for sixty Ellen Street from the Fire Department to the city? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move to assign and accept the residential offer to purchase.
You move to accept the assignment of that offer to purchase?
Prove the assignment.
Move the assignment and acceptance of res- residential offer to purchase. I'll read the whole thing.
Close it off.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Catherine to approve the assignment of the purchase agreement from the Fire Department to the City of Platteville. We'll vote.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our action agenda is the driveway for Mr. Charles Trace through two eighty West Norwood Way. Howard, do you want to?
Okay. Yes, at the last meeting, uh, Mr. Trace, uh, asked the council for consideration and staff was directed to provide a report. Um, Mr. Trace is the owner of two eighty West Norwood Way, the westernmost parcel on the street. Uh, I've enclosed a copy of the aerial photo. Uh, the street ends approximately forty feet short of the west end of the subdivision. His driveway comes out on the unimproved section of the street right-of-way. Um, in his comments, he also mentioned a fire hydrant, and on your, or on your map, I've placed a dot where that fire hydrant is located. Um, when the subdivision was being constructed, uh, the developer convinced the city that he should not be required to pave to the end of this, of the subdivision on this street and, and Emily Street to the south. Um, there is enough frontage on the paved street so that this is a developable lot under the subdivision code. City crews clear access to the fire hydrant in the wintertime. And in conversation with the fire chief, they haven't had any issues with this hydrant at this point. Um, other items in, uh, in other subdivisions and in this same subdivision, there are cases when a driveway goes along a platted but undeveloped portion of the street right-of-way. Most of the cases are corner lots where one street is paved and the other one is not, and the driveway comes out on the unimproved portion. Uh, the city has allowed, uh, access at the owner's expense, uh, to connect along the unimproved right-of-way, um, to an improved street, uh, until such time as that street is approved. Two lots, for example, in Golden Heights, had driveways like this, and then recently Minoge and Calhoun Drive were constructed, and, and those driveways now connect into those new streets as if it was, uh, put there as part of the construction. Uh, we currently have a case where, uh, an owner has a driveway on the unimproved Emily Street, and we have an easement agreement with this owner. Um, so based on what we have done in the past, staff is recommending that we stay with the existing precedent and work with Mr. Trace to sign the easement agreement to allow him to construct his driveway on the platted but unimproved portion of West Norwood Way until such time as the street is extended and improved. This conforms with our current precedent. Uh, his lot meets all subdivision requirements. Um, as, as you had heard last time, Mr. Trace believes that the city should pave the extension of the street at the city's expense. Uh, a rough estimate for extending the street would be about six thousand dollars. Uh, alternatively, Mr. Trace, uh, said that he would accept if the city abandoned that portion of the right-of-way, uh, so that he could own that as, as a portion of his property, uh, so that, that would just become a piece of his property. Um, the, the, un, the consequence of doing that would be that that would preclude us from extending the street in the future, um, without doing negotiations, uh, you know, to buy it back. So.
I just quibble one little bit with the, technically, we are granting a permit. We are not granting an easement. The, the distinction may be lost amongst the others, but amongst some of the civilians, but we're not given an interest in land. We are authorizing someone to use our right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, and, and so Howard, you're, help me understand, you're, uh, based on past, past precedent, you're suggesting that we, uh, when Mr. Uh, Trace, Trace puts in his driveway, he could put driveway material, uh, by permit onto what would be road right-of-way? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, that kind of makes it easier in my head to understand that. And this has happened in other subdivisions?
Yes.
And, uh, the developer did live up to the developer's agreement?
Yes.
So this is not a developer issue?
Correct.
Okay. Questions? Questions of Howard?
And there's no stipulation as far as putting any type of curb and gutter into, I don't know which direction this is, is that, uh, south? The, the-
South.
Part of the driveway, the fathers from the house?
Um-
There's no stipulation as far as curb and gutter?
The house and street in this area run approximately east-west.
Okay.
Roughly east-west. So, um, the, in the aerial photo, you can see the, the lighter gravel where, where the driveway is on the west side of the structure. So it, it comes out-
You can see that.
At the edge of the, where the curb, gutter, and pavement is.
So I think what, what Counselor Killian is trying to ask, Howard, is there's, uh, on mine and not on his too, there's a red line that says thirty-eight point seven feet.
That's, that's-
Just a minute. I think his question is about curb and gutter in that.
Is there any stipulation about curb and gutter?
That's what his question is. That's what his question is.
Or either, either side? Nothing?
No. If, if we were to grant this permit, then, then, uh, the owner would be allowed to extend the driveway. There would be no need for curb or curb and gutter. When the road is extended at some point in the future, then, then curb and gutter would be installed and, and his driveway would then connect to the extended curb and gutter like any other driveway and street.
Whose expense would that be to put in the curb and gutter? Would it be the new developer?
Yes.
Why would the new developer put in curb and gutter for another subdivision portion?
This conversation is what happened with a previous council when this developer was doing the subdivision. He argued that he had to go into the previous subdivision to hook on to that, and he argued, convinced the council at the time that, that he needed, that he only needed to extend the road far enough to meet the building codes to make that lot a buildable lot, and he did not need to extend it to the, uh, end of the subdivision.
At the end of the subdivision, which was originally the Norwood subdivision, that street, the curb and gutter, went to the end of that subdivision where it was ended, from the portion that was purchased by the owner of tho, that land that eventually got set for the Oak, Oak Haven. What, my question is, the curb and gutter should have been put in to the end of the, to the end of the subdivision, because it's not like the rest of them where they were on a corner. It basically gave the impression that the lot, the subdivision, ended where the street ended, but that's not the case. The subdivision ends thirty-eight feet beyond where the curb and gutter are. That confuse, that's where I s, I think confusion comes in, is because if the curb and gutter would have been placed there, then we know that that's where the end of the street came in. And when the person that purchased this, his assumption was that his lot line went to the end of the subdivision and the road should have been continued. I'm just saying that when it's on a corner, I can understand that somebody is going to want to extend it so they could get to their property. But to all of a sudden have it as a dead end and you're dead-ending the street before the end of the subdivision, that makes it very difficult, especially when you got a fire hydrant at the very end. If the fire hydrant was, let's say, thirty or forty feet to the east, then I can understand that there's no problem with getting to the, you know, fire truck- then I can understand that there's no problem with getting to the, you know, fire trucks getting to it or whatever. But it's basically almost to the end of the subdivision. And to me, we should be extending that street to the end. Now, if we don't want to extend the street, we should at least have the curb and gutter there. So, there's a distinction of where that subdivision ends.
And, uh, Tom, uh, you know, the, the challenge of any council is that you live with the decisions of past councils.
Yes, I understand.
I could probably say that the majority of us, in fact, I, I would venture to say almost all of us were not on the council at the time that this subdivision was put in.
I'm just, I'm just giving you my opinion.
I understand what you're saying. It's surprising to me, too. It was surprising to me, too. But that was a deal that was struck not by us, but by someone else. I think it's important to know that the developer lived up to the developer's agreement. Whether or not we agree with the agreement, we weren't the ones that voted on the agreement. But, uh, the developer did live up to the, uh, uh, terms of the agreement. Are there other questions of staff?
None.
Don, question? Otherwise, uh, Mr. Trace is here, and I actually believe you'd like to speak against the recommendation, not for the recommendation, or do you want to speak for the, you want to speak? Yeah, you want, you want to speak, so. I think he wants to speak against what Howard is recommending or what Howard is recommending.
Yeah, I, I would like to speak for it.
For?
For the road being finished by the city.
Okay, so then you're speaking against the recommendation.
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes. So, basically, um, with where the fire hydrant sits, um, it's my understanding that the road does not get plowed because it's not a finished road. I was told that by Howard. Where it gets plowed to is pretty much where you see the end is right there. Um, I bring a plow truck home from work and I plow out the remaining part to my driveway. I do not ply out the fire hydrant right there. Um, usually it's plowed in pretty good in the wintertime. Um, right now, it is all covered in by grass. And where they crack the fire hydrant open, um, there's a ditch dug right there. So, I mean, it's, it's not maintained at all, in my opinion. And once again, I, the closest fire hydrant is all the way down, um, on the other side of Oak Haven. So, if there was a circumstance where it needed to be used, um, and that one was blocked, they'd have to run a line across Oak Haven, which would hinder traffic there. So, yeah, I think with the fire hydrant being there, it should be accessible. And then, once again, you know, I, I pay pretty good taxes. I know that his estimate was about six thousand dollars to complete this. I, I don't believe it would be that much, but, um, I mean, my, my entire driveway to finish blacktopping it is going to be about twenty-nine hundred dollars. So, I don't see how this section would be over double that with curb and gutter, but I didn't get an estimate on it. And I, I pay, you know, roughly five thousand dollars a year on taxes, so it would be nice to have access right there. Um, there is a covenants in my neighborhood that requires me to have blacktop or at least a finished driveway. I don't believe I should have to finish a road to have that driveway in. And if I don't complete that, I'm gonna have to drive over gravel in order to get to my driveway. So, I do appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Additional questions?
Can I ask the, the fire department chief?
Sure.
What is your opinion of this situation?
I guess for us, you know, where the hydrants at, I mean, we're, if we, we need a hydrant, we're gonna, we're gonna find it. So, and if Howard's staff has said that they would keep the hydrant clear, so, a- as long as they keep it clear, I mean, that's our concern. You know, obviously, we don't, we don't do the clearing and the maintaining of the hydrants. That's the, the water department. We, you know, hope that they catch all of them. You know, sometimes one does get missed or something, but, um, as long as they keep it clear, that's the main thing for us. It's an end of a line hydrant anyways, so we're probably more apt to want to use a different hydrant anyways. The end of a line hydrants typically have really bad water. So, sometimes they're, they, that water isn't good to go through our trucks. So, we, we'd probably try to grab a different hydrant anyways, but, um, obviously, if, if extending the road makes it more accessible for the newer homes and stuff being developed in that area, that's a bonus, you know, um, to us, so. As long as it's maintained, we don't have a preference either way.
He has mentioned how in the wintertime, it, it does get, uh, plowed in snow, so let's look at worst-case scenario. Say it's February and his house is actually the house that you're responding to.
Yep. It, it would delay us some because we'd have to lay more hose out from a, from a hydrant farther away.
Right.
So, it would definitely delay the response and the service we could provide for him.
Sure.
I have a question. Where is Emily Street?
There's, um, there's a platted right-of-way a little bit east of there. It's, uh, do you know where that, uh, trail comes up from? There, there's that, uh, walking trail that comes up from the Super Eight properties. Emily Street is roughly, uh, across the street to the south of where that trail comes out.
It's where Luke Peters lives.
Is there, is there a driveway there?
Luke put one in.
Yes, there, there is a driveway there. The, the property owner, th- there, there is a house that is west of the platted Emily Street. The Emily Street platted right-of-way is only forty or fifty feet long at the most to, to the south end of the subdivision. And so, um, the property owner directly to the west ha- uh, placed a driveway that would face that platted Emily Street and then comes out and then goes along that Emily Street. And that's the case that-
But, but that property could have been, uh, could have had a driveway onto whatever this street is.
Knollwood Way.
So, the property owner chose to, to take that, just like chose to use the alternate street rather than, uh, this property owner has no other choice other than I can see. I mean, there aren't a whole lot of places for a driveway. There's not another road. Okay, folks, what is your preference?
So, the distance that's not finished is thirty-eight feet, seven inches?
Thirty-nine or thirty-eight. I can't tell.
That's, that's a distance that's drawn on a map. It's roughly forty feet.
Forty feet. And what's the cost to, uh, finish this section, this portion?
I'm saying roughly six thousand dollars to extend curb and gutter on both sides of the street and extend the street width to, full width to the end of the, uh, subdivision.
Well, Frank, would I favor helping the homeowner?
Is this a blacktop street?
Yes.
Are you ready for a motion?
Ready for somebody?
I move, let's see, is this, is this a motion item?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
This is a motion item.
I move that the city, uh, finish the street as far as curb and gutter and the blacktop.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second that the city complete the street to, uh, the edge of this subdivision, I guess, is what it is. So, ru- approximately forty feet, putting in curb and gutter on both the north and south sides of the road and completing that forty feet of blacktop. Motion and a second, right? Okay, Jan will vote.
Does?
Yes.
Frances?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, but that's the end of our action items for tonight. Uh, we will now move on to information and discussion. And the first item on that agenda is the request to amend a development agreement. And this would be the development agreement for River to Valley Initiatives.
Okay, um, when the, the city turned over some of the former Columbok properties to developers, we, one of the properties in question went to River to Valley Initiatives, a property on Cedar Street. The agreement, um, specified the use of that property. Based on the submitted proposal from River to Valley, they had proposed, um, demolishing that structure and come, and completing the construction of a new house at that location. That was in the development agreement and the, the selection was made based on that proposal. The developer now would like to amend that agreement to allow them to move, excuse me, a structure from Southwest Road to this location on Cedar Street and remodel that structure after it's moved instead of the proposed to demolish and construct new. Basically, I think what happened is they got in and looked at the property on Southwest Road a little quote, more close than they did initially and decided it was worth saving. So, they're looking for an alternative proposal as far as a location for that structure. Staff's main concern with that is, um, from the standpoint of, you know, the proposal that they submitted that the, the city selected was for a new construction at that location. Other developers that submitted proposals had, uh, submitted a proposal to remodel a structure. And I think this selection was made because they were proposing new construction. So, to go back now and to allow them to do something other than proposed, I don't think is fair to the developers that were not selected. It's kind of a bait and switch, um, for me, so I don't think it's a, a fair proposal. So, um, I would recommend against it, but that is their request. Any questions?
For those new council people who weren't here during the, uh, RFP process, do you want to kind of talk about how that happened, Joe, so that, Catherine, you weren't aware of that? Don, are you aware of how that transpired? Tom? Okay, so kind of explain what we did.
So, of the, I think it was twelve properties in total the city had acquired through the, the legal process from the, the former owner. The city did a request for proposals, submitted it out there. Developers were able to submit proposals for the reuse of those properties. Many of those submitted proposals for multiple properties. But in this particular case, the, uh, five sixty-five West Cedar Street, I believe, had six or seven, um, developers submit proposals. There was a, a review committee that, uh, uh, took a look at all those proposals, made a recommendation to the council on what, uh, proposal they deemed to be the most advantageous for the city. Um, and in per, in this particular property, I was on that subcommittee and I do recall that that was, uh, heavily, uh, weighted in their favor was the fact that they were proposing new construction on that site where everybody else was proposing remodeling the existing structure. Um, I think there was the consensus that it would be a higher value structure, higher tax value and so forth with new construction, a better, better quality product when it was all said and done. So, um, their proposal was the one that was selected. And I do know for sure that they were not the highest bid as far as the value that the, they bid for the property. They were second.
Terms of what they paid?
In terms of the, what they were, the developer was willing to pay for the property. But it was deemed that since they were providing new construction, that outweighed the additional dollars initially that would be provided, which is my concern of now going backwards and not allowing them or requiring them to do as proposed.
My recollection is that the house that was there, which I went to view today and couldn't find it, was about a story and a half. Is that correct?
I believe so. I think the, it was a two-story, but I think part of the, the second story was within the, the roof structure.
Well, when I, when I, that's my, was my thought as far as what it was like. And, uh, looking at the house, they wanted to, they want to move in that house, they had people living on the third floor. Because there was a fire escape.
Yeah, that's a, that's an old four-square, so it's a two-story with a walk-up at it.
So, my thinking is that that house moved over to that location really would not fit there well because a lot of the houses are not that height. Plus, also, the lot on which they would move this house is not, to me, very large. And so, if you put in such a large house, it might have as much as two and a half stories, three stories. You're gonna have quite a parking issue as far as that location. So, I would not favor the moving of the house. And if they want to fix up the old house, they could fix it up in place. Is that correct?
Uh, no, that would require a development agreement modification for the other property.
But if they want to fix it up, couldn't they get a change? Possibly?
That would depend on the council. They would also have to-
That depends on the council.
Request a, a mo- amendment to that-
Okay.
Development agreement.
Joe, if you don't mind me interceding here. Would that house that they plan on moving, the one from four-twenty to five-sixty-five, or would that house fit on that lot? With the, with the setbacks and everything?
Oh, I, they, they could make it fit, yes. There would be, there would be adequate width there.
Okay.
But my concern is parking. Because if they make it a duplex, they have to have at least six onsite parking stalls, correct? If it's eight, if they have eight people.
Depends on the number of bedrooms, yes. And I don't, I mean, that, that's not what they're proposing, I don't believe, is to make it duplex, but-
Would it have enough square footage to be a duplex?
I don't know if it has enough, uh, if the lot has enough frontage or, or area to make it a duplex.
Does this affect, um, in the development agreement, item G? The redevelopment construction undertaken by the developer on the property shall provide an increase in the value of the property to achieve a minimum fair market value of a hundred and sixty-five by January first? That, does that come into play at all? Or does it, if, does it affect both of them or just one?
It would just affect this property. I, I think it's gonna be harder to reach a higher value with the remodeling than new construction. But as I mentioned in the work session, the, the, that value is kind of an incentive to get the project done more than, um, end result. But I do think it would be harder to reach that target with, uh, remodeling.
Then, on, um, four, where there's a non-performance penalty on page three, would that be for the two properties or would that only be a non-performance penalty for one?
Well, both properties would be subject to that same, uh, requirement. I mean, basically, they've got to get the projects done, um, by that deadline or they're subject to that penalty payment. Uh, you know, I don't know whether they could get the remodeling done quicker than new construction. I, I doubt it, but, um, that might be part of their reasoning. I'm not sure. I believe it takes longer to remodel, move and remodel a structure than to build new sometimes, so.
Any other comments? I, I, uh, was on the council when, uh, we, uh, went through this RFP process and I, like, uh, Joe has expressed, would see this as a, um, and kind of an unfairness because you propose one thing and then if you're evaluated against eight other people and you're selected because of what you propose- and you're selected because of what you propose and other people may have proposed similar to now what this re-proposed, this new proposal is. I mean, it, it seems to me like, uh, it, it's, it, it's just not. Yeah, it's almost, yeah, I don't know if I'd call it a bait and switch, but it's just, uh, yeah. It's kind of a breach of contract, I guess.
I do have a question again. Is there a reason why a representative of River to Valley Initiatives isn't here to explain their?
I, I don't know for sure, but I'm thinking maybe she's gonna be coming to the next meeting when you actually vote on it.
Okay.
Okay, any other thing about this? Any other questions, any other information anyone wants before this comes on the agenda next time? Okay, then let's move on to the next information and discussion item, which is the fo- former Pioneer Ford site selection of developer.
Joe and I are gonna tag-team this one. You may notice he wrote the staff report and I'm gonna do a, a quick PowerPoint under the, the dripping water here. Uh, so we'll just get a moment to get up here. All right, there we go. So as is the case, uh, with most development plans, I like to go back to our vision with respect to kind of what we're looking for in the area. And, um, as most of you are aware, in 2010, the city did a downtown master plan. And in that master plan, it talked about downtown Platteville being a vibrant place and the cultural heart and identity of the community. A diverse business mix is thriving and profiting. Arrival to the downtown district is distinctive and appealing and parking is easy to find. Visitors discover reasons to linger and explore and more people choose to live downtown. Also in the downtown plan, it talked about, uh, actually identified, uh, the former Pioneer Ford site as, uh, one of the potential sites for redevelopment. One of the options it presented, uh, was only relevant if Pioneer Ford remained in the site, but they also talked about two options if the dealership were to move. One of those was a public-private development with up to three hundred and fifty parking stalls and office space facing Pine and Water Streets. The other potential vision they had was a private three-to-five-story development with underground parking and, uh, uses that could include retail, service, office and/or residential, depending on the market demands at the time. So just to sort of, uh, recap the history again, a lot which I wasn't here for, but this, this has been something that's been in process for a while. Um, as I already mentioned, the downtown master plan was adopted in early 2011. In September of 2011, the property was listed for sale by the owner and I think was on the market for a fair amount of time before the city stepped in with a offer, uh, to purp- purchase, which, uh, happened in April of 2015. We, uh, were successful in gaining some grants to help with the acquisition and clean up environmental assessment and, uh, demolition costs for the site. And we completed the environmental assessment, uh, in October of 2015 with no major findings. And December of last year, we closed on the property and in that same month, uh, we held a community visioning session uh, with respect to the future of the site. Um, and then also in December of 15, based on the results of that visioning session, we issued an RFP, um, and collected responses from that RFP until April. And then in February, uh, the council appointed a task force, uh, to assist with evaluating the responses to the RFP. And so just to refresh everyone, uh, about the, the area that we're talking about, it's, um, bordered by, uh, Water Street and Pine Street and, um, Oak Street. And there is, uh, parking actually on the west side of Oak Street as well that's included in the parcel. And you can see the outline, uh, the area outlined in red. With respect to the community visioning site, sorry, just had a drop. We had about forty-five people, uh, attend that session, so it was pretty good turnout. And we asked them questions like what types of features would help establish this as a gateway to downtown? Uh, what types of uses should be considered for the site? What don't want, what don't we want to see on this site? And when the project's done, I hope we can say, fill in the blank, uh, about the project. Uh, and we also asked similar questions online. As you can expect, we had a variety of responses and different viewpoints. But in the end, we sort of summarized it, um, in six guiding principles for the site. Uh, one of those principles was to serve as a gateway. The project uses architectural and art themes to signify and invite people into the downtown area. Uh, we also talked about being smart with parking, that the project takes advantage of the topography to maximize and hide parking and, uh, that we should consider uses that make shared parking possible. Um, we, uh, the, the group also envisioned a multi-story, multi-use building that could potentially combine retail, office and/or housing, as all three are prominent in the downtown area. Um, they wanted whatever happened on this site to complement his, Platteville's historic downtown in terms of its facade and site design. Uh, they thought it was important that the development connect to the outdoors and the street and that it had pedestrian-friendly features, green spaces and possible outdoor gathering spaceship, outdoor gathering spaces. And then lastly, that the project helped grow the tax, uh, base and, uh, within the downtown district. So the RFP evaluation task force, uh, consisted of, I think, uh, seven members. Uh, we had two members from the council, uh, members Daz and Noel. Uh, Larry Ward, who is a member of our redevelopment, um, authority, participated in part of the process. He wasn't able to participate in all of it. Jack Lugkey from the, um, from Main Street, Ela Cockadee from Pedic and myself and Joe Carroll rounded out the team. And so the task force then reviewed the four proposals that we received, uh, from the RFP before selecting two finalists. And when they looked at those, um, those proposals, they, they thought about, uh, the criteria listed on the, the right. Uh, the degree to which the proposals met the guiding principles, the estimated project costs and gener- and tax base generated, the developer's expertise, experience and financial capacity, the purchase price offered, the proposed development schedule and, uh, other, all others. The task force actually, uh, I interviewed two of the responders to the RFP, um, before, uh, making a recommendation. And that recommendation, uh, recommended developer is General Capital Group. And General Capital Group is a Wisconsin-based company. They have twenty-plus years of experience in industrial, commercial and multifamily housing development. They've got projects over in, in over twenty communities. And I do think that there's a fair amount, there was a fair amount of confidence, um, from the task force members that General Capital could execute their plan. The actual project is a, a mixed-use residential and commercial project. And I guess, I guess one comment I wanna make is that you're not gonna see a lot of fancy diagrams and pictures tonight because, uh, that we're really not at that stage yet. Uh, when developers make proposals to RFPs, um, they're doing it at their own risk and at their own dollar and they typically don't invest, um, in actual architectural schematics, um, until they, they're, they're kind of the, the designated, uh, partner to move forward. Uh, but what they did propose was, uh, approximately seventy-five hundred square feet in commercial space with eighty-one thousand square feet of apartment space, so a mixed-use facility. The apartments would be a combination of market rate units. We're estimating around fifteen to twenty percent with the remainder affordable housing. They would reuse two of the existing buildings as well as having some new construction. That was a little bit of a surprise to us that actually we had, uh, uh, three of their proposals wanted to use at least, reuse at least some of the existing buildings on the site. Um, they would use the parcel on the northwest corner of Oak and Pine Streets for parking. And the estimated cost of the project as it's, as, as they proposed it, uh, would be eleven point four or five million. And so then, just with respect to kind of the general layout of what this might look like, you can see here the parking designated with a P, which would, uh, is along Pine Street. Then they would retain the, I think the former hotel that was being used as an apartment building. Uh, they would retain that, uh, as housing and, and remodel it. The large rectangular structure on the corner of Pine Street and, and Oak, uh, would also be retained and, uh, there would likely be commercial space on the first floor and then it would serve as a, the upper level would likely serve as a community gathering area for the residents of the apartment structure. The area that's in, uh, the dotted lines, uh, that's sort of the U shape that rounds the corner of Pine and Water Streets would be new construction. They would demolish the existing, uh, I assume it was a showroom, the sort of domed, uh, Pioneer Ford building and, and the building to the side of that and, and then create this in its space. And this, uh, would be predominantly housing, but you can see some small areas carved out along water and then along Pine, um, that could, would, uh, potentially be some first floor commercial space. So with respect to financing and timeline, um, the financing would most likely be a combination of developer equity, tax credit equity, home funds and TIF assistance backed with a guaranteed repayment through real estate taxes and contribution of the land. The project that General Capital's proposing is contingent on securing WIDA tax credits. Submission to WIDA would occur in January of 2017 and if the project were successful, the credits would be awarded in April of 2017. Um, so they're, they would anticipate that if, if we moved forward, that construction would start in the fall of 2017 with an anticipated completion date of December of 2018. But again, this is just the beginning part. If, if you decide to move forward today, you'd really be directing staff to begin kind of negotiations with the developer with respect to both project design and the financing components. So for next steps, um, as I, as I already said, the, um, if, if we moved forward, you would be directing staff to begin negotiations with General Capital. Uh, there would be several milestones, um, with respect to this project where the city council, the plan commission and members of the public, uh, would be able to provide input and direction. Uh, we're anticipating that the general steps of, of the project would be that, uh, city staff and the developer would, uh, sort of iron out a letter of intent to develop, which would then enable, give the broad parameters of the project and then give the developer, uh, the ability to request the WIDA tax credits. And those that are, were vali- are evaluating the tax credits at WIDA would know that the city was serious as a partner in the project. Uh, we would also be doing a general fi- a general financial analysis and, um, the city council would look at that letter of intent and then decide whether or not to proceed with the project. If we did proceed, then we'd move on to a general site plan and, uh, plan commission and city council would review that. Uh, then on to a site-specific plan, also with a plan commission and city council review and then, uh, a development agreement, which would go before the city council. Uh, if, if you did not wanna proceed, uh, we think the next, uh, potential other options would be to reevaluate the remaining proposals. Um, we could potentially reissue the RFP, uh, to see if we, um, had any new, any new responders or hire a consultant to consi- uh, to assist with marketing the site. I think from a staff perspective, we, we probably feel like we, we've probably done what we can do in, in terms of, of generating interest. So we likely need additional assistance if the council did not wanna proceed with what's proposed, uh, by the task force.
Are there questions of Karen or Joe? And we're not looking to take action tonight.
Correct.
This would be on the agenda for action, um, to proceed with a letter of intent at the next council meeting. So, any questions, any additional information anybody needs?
All right, thank you.
We are at the end of the agenda. How are people that came in late? We've passed that item on the agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, Jan will vote.
Does.
Does.
Francis?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Motion carries.